Good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome you to July 27, 2023, meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Zoning Commission. And I would like to call this meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, please. All right, thank you again for everybody coming down here and showing up. We all really appreciate it. With that, if we could have roll call, please.
Chairman Slasher?
Here.
Vice Chair Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Arnett? Commissioner Arnett? Commissioner Dan Zeisen?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Lindblum? Commissioner Montoya? Commissioner Schwart?
Here.
And Commissioner Arnett?
Let's try that again. I hear you can hear me, I'm here.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
No, thank you.
Chairman, we have a form.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the chairman's announcements. This meeting has been noticed in accordance with open meeting law ARS 38-431. Agendas are available within 24 hours of each meeting in the Maricopa County Planning and Development Office, and are also available at the Planning and Development website one week prior to hearing of www.mericopa.gov/Planning. Staff reports prepared for each agenda item should become part of the permanent record for each case. With respect to hearing process, cases will be considered in the order they appear on the agenda unless otherwise agreed to by the commission. For each case, the applicant will be given a set amount of time to present. Anyone wishing to speak on a particular case will fill out a speaker's card for in-person attendance or raise your hands within go-to webinar. The amount of time allowed for speaking shall be at the discretion of the commission chair. Staff will provide the chairman with the names of the persons who have registered and noted desire to comment, and those registered participants who have raised their hand. Chairman will call on each named participant one at a time. Chairman will conduct the hybrid in-person virtual public hearing according to the bylaws and according to the rules established by the chairman regarding public comment. Votes will be done by roll call vote only. Chairman will verbally identify the specific members responsible for all motions and seconds. Moving along, the consent minutes, I'm sorry. Does anyone from the commission have any comments regarding either the June 8th or June 22nd minutes? Hearing none, so moved, we're approved. And on to the consent agenda. Darren, would you like to present, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we have six items on the consent agenda. They are Z 2022-099, known as Pottery Land in District 1, to 10-year special use permit for an interim industrial use of storage and sales of outdoor landscaping decor in the Rural 43 zoning district on a one-plus acre site south of the southeast corner of Cooper and Chandler Heights. There's no known opposition, and the recommendation is for approval in paragraph 13, subject to conditions A through M. MCP 2023-003, known as Marbella West Billboards and Cell Tower Facility, District 4, is an MCP amendment with planning development in the Rural 43 MAA MF zoning district to permit four billboards, including some digital faces, and a 100-foot-high WCF lattice tower on a 62.7-acre site east of the southeast corner of Northern Parkway and De Sert Road. There's no known opposition in paragraph 13, the recommendations for approval, subject to conditions A through J. Item 3 is S 2021-015, known as White Take Put Hills 3, District 4. This is a preliminary plot with 645 lots in the R16, RUPD, R17, RUPD, R18, RUPD, and R110, RUPD zoning districts for 232 and 1/4 acres at the northwest corner of Northern Avenue and Citrus Road. There's no known opposition in paragraph 15, the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions A through U. Case Z 2021-104, known as Trapeze Training Facility in District 1, is a special use permit for an open-air recreational facility in the form of flying trapeze and circus training in the Rural 43 zoning district. It's a two-and-a-half-acre site north of the northwest corner of Chandler Heights and 182nd Street in the Queen Creek area. There's no known opposition, there's three letters of support. The recommendation in paragraph 12 is for approval, subject to conditions A through L. And finally, items 5 and 6 are CP 2023-007 and Z 2023-029, known as Sandy Farm, District 4. This is a comp plan amendment to designate the land use for industrial park and associated zone change to Industrial 2 IUPD for 150 acres along the west side of 363rd Avenue between Broadway and Southern. There's no known opposition. The recommendations in regard to the CPA are for approval in paragraph 16 and for approval of the zoning case with conditions A through L in paragraph 17. That concludes the consent agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you may.
Thank you, Darren. Is there anyone from the commission that has questions of staff? Hearing none, is there anyone from the public interested in speaking on the consent items?
We have a gentleman that would like to speak in regards to one of the items.
Is that one of the cards?
No, he did not fill out speaker card as of yet.
Come up and state your name for the record. I'd like to limit your comments to two minutes.
My name is Daniel Romney. I'm kind of opposed of the pottery land agenda, I guess. Reason why, and I apologize, I didn't get the speaker's hand, I just got a card saying the date today, so when I show.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we remove pottery land from the consent agenda.
Put it on the regular. All right, because you're speaking in opposition, we're going to remove item number one and place it on the regular.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the applicant's present either. Can we check?
Yeah, let's see. Anyone from the applicant here to speak on item number one, pottery land?
I believe they're online.
Okay. Is there anyone online that's wishing to speak as the applicant for item number one?
Yes.
I think we want to ask the applicant if they wish to have this item scheduled or continue to the next case, if they want to be here in person, or if they want. A motion, a motion for items 2 through 6.
We're not aware of anyone else on the webinar.
Do I have a motion or any further discussion from the commission? If not, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, this is Commissioner Mitchell. I'll make a motion for a recommendation of approval for consent agenda items 2 through 6 with staff recommendations.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Vice Chair Mitchell. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is that Commissioner Schwart?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I have a second from Commissioner Schwart. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeisen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwart?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mitchell?
Yes.
Chairman Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman, we have an approval by a vote of 6 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries unanimously on the consent agenda. Now, moving back to item number one, is the applicant still on the line?
Yes, I am. Hello.
Is this the applicant for item number one, pottery land?
That's correct. My name's Arnold.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We have someone here in person that's wishing to speak in opposition.
Right.
What do you want to do since you're not here in person? You want us to continue it to the next meeting so you can be here in person to speak?
What would be the next meeting date?
One second.
Can I make a comment?
That would be September 14th if we were to continue this.
September 14th.
Oh, boy.
He can, I have a question for staff. He can just continue, keep it on the.
Continue.
Put it on regular agenda and.
He can present his case online.
Yeah, yeah, if you'd like to present here.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about this. We've been there for like stated 20 years, no, not, you know, any problems with any neighbors whatsoever. This person, which is our neighbor to the south, was trying to get me to put in a block wall because the city of Chandler was doing a expansion on the street. And for temporary reasons, we had to move to the neighbor's lot to the east of us, or to the, sorry, to the north of us. And so we had pottery in that, in that field. Well, pottery land is completely blocked in, but when we had to move over to the use the lot next door to clear out the space so that they can do the construction in the front, he asked, the neighbor came and asked, told me to build a wall, that he didn't want to see the pottery. And I said, well, I can't build the block wall, this is just temporary. And we went back and forth, and so this is his way of getting back at me because I wouldn't spend $30,000 to put up a block wall for him that we were just there on a temporary basis on that other property. Otherwise, pottery land is completely blocked in 100%. So this is a retaliation for not doing what he asked me to do. That's all I can say.
Okay, well, thank you for your input. We would like to hear from Mr., can't read his writing, but gentleman that stood up. Yeah, please state your name again. And you're in opposition.
This is Daniel Romney in opposition. So the problem is that I have, and I know I'm on a two-minute timeframe, so the opposition that I have is a few things. Pottery land, when it's built, they made no, there's no parking. They have parking in the front, which they keep their gates closed. We live on a one-lane street. That street, when they, when their pottery plate people come to purchase pottery, they park on that road. I have a son with disabilities that always has attendant care coming in and out, including nurses, medical, all kinds, which we had to have several ambulances and fire trucks come to our house several times. When there's cars parked on that road, there's no access. We brought this to attention, it was dismissed. That's when they decided to move over a few of the stuff behind the pottery. That's when you could see on the record that he's been written up for not getting approval and just putting his pottery, his business, and other people's plots without even getting any permission from that, which I provide documentation on there. But he's talking about a brick wall. He actually just started doing that when I found out, you know, because all their trash started blowing in all into my yard. I had my house up for listing, and you could see all their crap everywhere along the house. So I'm surrounded not only on the one side, but on the back. The backside, the north side, is the land that he didn't even have permits or anything agreement on, and he just starts storing stuff down. He's the one that actually knocked down the block wall to create access back there. So he, when I, when I asked him a question, that's when he, Arnold sat there and said, hey, look, I'll put up a fence, which it was tarps, so it just made it look worse than anything else before. So I actually have a few neighbors, including signatures that we can provide on this for the opposition. I didn't know that, you know, none of us, all we did is again, receive a card saying, hey, this is a court date. I didn't know that we're supposed to have the rest of this on there. So I could provide that at a, you know, at the next meeting and whatnot, including the neighbors coming in as well. But we're just surrounded. I mean, it's just, there's no access, there's no anything, there's junk everywhere, and that's my opposition.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Does staff have any comments to that?
Mr. Chairman, no, we don't have any comments to this.
Staff still is with.
You know, there is one thing. We do have a special use permit that does have a precise plan on it. That does going to have about nine parking spaces in the southern part of the property, utilizing that southern driveway that's along that street there, Cooper Road. And that would actually kind of alleviate a lot of the parking distress that's going on in that area. Unfortunately, we don't have the site plan review, but it was with the packet that was sent. That one, that could actually alleviate a lot of these issues. Another thing, this is going to be screened as well with a six-foot wall, and we have some conditions in there that are going to state that nothing can be stacked above that to kind of alleviate a lot of the neighboring concerns in there. And what, a lot of this would be really beneficial, you know, once you have all these set in. This business might actually be a little bit more easy to go through, but currently, right now, the way it's been going on now, it has, does have a violation. Kind of people are just parking on the street, there's really no order. And one of these benefits of having a special use permit with a precise site plan on it is going to have a nice benefit of actually having people park there and kind of clean the place up and make it more like a business than kind of the way it is currently today.
Basically, what you're saying is by the applicant going through this special use permit process, it's going to rectify a lot of the issues from neighbors.
Mr. Chairman, for the customers online, that was Planner Martin Martel.
Thank you, Martin.
Chairman, if I have a question.
Vice Chair Mitchell?
Yes, Mr. Martel. So my understanding is the site plan that will be, you know, the stipulated site plan is ingress and egress will be on Cooper Road then?
Cooper Road only.
Okay.
Yeah, there's going to be a one driveway on the north that also links to Cooper Road, only intended for deliveries once in a while, very rarely. Now, there was a central driveway that the city of Chandler built when they did the road improvements. The applicant's going to seal that off and not use that at all. So that one, so that for all things, everything that's going to be customer-related will be on the southern driveway. Anything that has to do with like deliveries is going to be on the north driveway.
Thank you. Because my understanding is from the member of the public that came and spoke, the parking concern was primarily on the Via de Palmas. And if you don't mind coming up, appreciate that.
The planning development guy right here. So what he's trying to say is there's one car, where you can see it on the outline where Cooper is, there's one car that's going to be able to park there. There's no access. On that, the very edge where it kind of goes at a angle, you can kind of see faintly that that's the driveway into their lot, which the customers don't, they keep the gates closed. And then there, on the backside where that big barn store just, there's another gate in there as well. But again, all of it is directed because it's so narrow, there's no, there's no parking in that. So where he's sitting there saying that there's parking, that's an easement between the Cooper Road and their fence that you can barely park the cars sideways in, and that's one lane, that's like, that's one car. So that automatically pushes, if they don't access them to drive into their property, that automatically pushes them into Palmer. But what I'm, again, what I'm saying is, and he brought up the thing about the six-foot wall, all their stuff is over six feet tall, I mean, all of it is. In fact, the wall is over seven, where mine is, and his, and it's above that. So any breeze, anything we get, all their crap comes in there. All their loading trucks, all of that. So I mean, I get what he's saying, but it's a huge disagreement with that, and I can apply proof on that.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Now, unfortunately, we don't have the benefit of having the site plan on here, but everything that is chose today will be completely different once this goes through the building permitting stage where a park, where that parking, there actually will be a parking area on the southern part of the property, and there'd be no access on Via de Palmas on there.
So there'll be sufficient parking in it.
Correct, right. And it's going to be based on the office space that they have, and also on the outdoor, outdoor display area, and also from that big storage unit, which is the barn. Those are all taken, the calculations that we use with the county to calculate the required parking on there, and that will be provided.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for those, for the commissioners that have their packet in front of them, it is, the site plan is attached in the packet to the staff report. It's not, it's not on our overhead because this is a consent item. It's in your packet, and I'm sorry I couldn't get the overhead.
That's right, no problem. Thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Thank you, Martin. David, is there anybody else on webinar wishing to speak, raising their hand?
The applicant has raised his hand, would like to speak.
Okay, the applicant would like to speak again?
Yes. Yeah, as far as all the junk and stuff and not permitted, we were working with the city of Chandler 100% when we made that move to that lot. So it was totally, totally, totally all upfront to the city of Chandler what we were doing, and that happens to be city of Chandler property. And also, second, there was nothing flying around, nothing would be going into his fence. The only part that we knocked out of fence from pottery land was a small area to move into the to move into the, to move our stuff into the north lot. We opened up a six-foot of the fence of the block we took down that was facing north, has nothing, not even facing his property. So not sure what he's referring to, is stuff flying into his property. Pretty much all that stuff was in there, it was pottery. And that's basically what it was. And anything else that we couldn't keep in store in our place. And as far as parking goes, we've had parking for, especially since the city of Chandler finished the job here, we've had parking in the front on Cooper Road. And we've had plenty of parking, so I'm not sure what he's referring to either, and all the parking on the side. I've never seen a car park on the side of, I know they may have, but I personally have never seen a car park on the side of, on Via de Palmas. So anyways, that's the way I see it.
Okay, thank you very much for your input, we appreciate it. Is there anybody from the commission that has any further questions of the applicant? Or the person speaking in opposition, or any other comment?
I have a quick question.
Commissioner Schwart?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. The applicant says, gives the appearance that this is under the jurisdiction of Chandler, that he went through Chandler for all these things. And in fact, I, I think this is a county case for a special use permit, am I correct?
I would assume that's case, yes.
Okay, and then my second question is, did he in fact receive citations for some of these issues that were spoken about by the person in opposition?
Question for staff.
Firstly, we were just discussing that the property owner may have been working with Chandler in regard to right-of-way issues because it's city of Chandler right-of-way. That's correct. The, was the question from Commissioner Schwart in regard to the zoning violations?
Yes.
Yes, there is, there is a zoning violation that approval of these special use permit will help win.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the commission wishing to speak or have questions? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public forum. Any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none, can I have a motion for item number one? Nobody? Euler? Euler? I'll make a motion.
Chairman Slasher, this is Commissioner Hernandez.
Commissioner Hernandez, go ahead.
Yes, I move to approve case Z 2022-099 as presented by staff.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeisen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwart?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mitchell?
Yes, and Chairman, could I briefly explain my vote?
Please.
So to the member of the public that, that came and spoke, you know, I'm sensitive to the concerns about, you know, the parking along the street. I will say that in my experience, when there is a site plan, and it looks like there's a stipulated site plan here, that will require, you know, parking spaces to be delineated, and I'm looking at the site plan here. Sometimes that can allow parking to be facilitated much better than if there's no, you know, parking lines, because you can imagine even the same space with parking lines put down versus not, people are going to be more efficient at parking there. So it's for that reason that, that I vote to recommend approval because I'm confident in looking at the site plan here that I think it makes sense and it should be able to accommodate the folks that will need to park there.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Slasher?
I'd like to say something as well from the gentleman that spoke. I echo the same comments that the vice chair made, that by this applicant going through this process, it's the comments that you made with what's existing now, when he goes through this process and has to follow the rules, that, that those issues, that you have a problem with should be rectified, so I'm voting in favor of it as well.
Chairman is at support?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Chairman, we have an approval by a vote of 6 to 0.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for showing up, we appreciate it. Moving on to the last item on the agenda, item number seven, Saving Paws Rescue. Staff ready to present the case?
Yes. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Agenda item number seven, case Z 2019-105 in Supervisor District 3 is a special use permit request for Saving Paws Rescue to allow a dog rescue rehabilitation facility in kennel in the Rural 43 zoning district. The site is located 300 feet west of the northwest corner of 15th Avenue and Irvine Road in the Phoenix area and is comprised of approximately five acres. Next slide, please. The proposed development will consist of a 3,000-square-foot single-family residential home that will be connected to two kennel wings that will each consist of 10 individual air-conditioned kennels for each individual dog with direct access to an individual shaded exterior yard that will be separated by a six-to-eight-foot-tall solid wall that will serve as a visual barrier and provide sound control. In order to reduce noise and minimize interaction with other dogs and humans, the applicant is proposing solid screening wall around the outdoor kennel yards and to the adjacent properties. A rotational potty break will be set for one, two, three dogs at a time to be taken outside during both the morning and evening as described in paragraph 4 of the staff report. The site is currently underused by Saving Paws Rescue. This special use permit will rectify a zoning violation for running a business on the site. A compliance agreement was executed where the applicant has agreed to bring the site into compliance no later than October 31, 2023. Construction of the single-family residence is currently in progress under an active building permit. Once the single-family residence is finished and has received final inspection, the use will fall under a home occupation which is allowed in the subject zoning district as long as a home is occupied. Staff has received three letters of opposition and 58 letters of support. Staff supports this SEP request for a cottage industry with a 10-year time limit to allow the opportunity to measure the land use impact on the surrounding area and provides sufficient time to finalize the single-family residence to be occupied. Therefore, staff recommends the commission to adopt a motion recommending approval for case Z 2019-105, subject to conditions A through L. At this time, I am open to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Paula. I do have one question, I didn't quite hear you. It said there were three people in opposition, and how many in support?
Correct, three people in opposition and 58 in support.
58, okay. I have seven people that are here in the audience that filled out speaker cards, but 58? All right, thank you. Are there any questions of staff from the commission? Hearing none, is the applicant here, wish to speak? Welcome, please state your name.
Welcome, please state your name.
Good morning, Ashley Marsh of Gamage and Burnham, 40 North Central, for your record. I did have a PowerPoint presentation, thank you, and I will steal a clicker from someone. Try to be brief, Mr. Chairman, as the seven speaker cards and the few people online who want to speak as well, but I'd like to highlight just a couple of items for you. So we are here, and, and thank you to Paula for that introduction to talk about the Saving Paws Dog Rescue up in the Desert Hills area. Very briefly, Saving Paws is a 501(c)(3) that was founded by Tricia Hulahan in our audience today, along with a lot of her volunteers and supporters. It's been operating for over 10 years, and at this site specifically since 2018. They provide really well facilitated and well needed care for German Shepherds and for Belgian Malinois dogs, as well as other dogs, and rescue more than 200 dogs every year, and have really critical partnerships in our community, among those with our own Maricopa County Animal Control and Care, New Hope, Phoenix Animal Care Coalition, Rescue and Humane Society. So this animal rescue, this dog rescue, again, partners with some of our key players and serves a great service to our community in taking in some of these dogs, including our own Maricopa County. Since opening 10 years ago, to Ms. Hulahan and her volunteers' credit, they've been able to acquire some significant partnerships with Safeway, with Petco, with Pet Depot, with Chewy, with Amazon, and some big corporate partners, but really been able to facilitate providing funds, what leads us here today, and that's a brand-new facility for Saving Paws. Saving Paws does operate, like I said, in that Desert Hills area. It's just south of Antem, so off of Irvine Road and Fifteenth Avenue. And this is a very, very rural setting of our greater Phoenix fabric of unincorporated Maricopa County. The pictures you see in this slide aren't of the property itself, but of the adjacent properties, to give you a real big context that this is a ag community, there's a lot of horse boarding, there's other rescues in the area. And just wanted to provide a little bit of context of what the surrounding area is for this five-acre property. Moving into the property specifically, as I mentioned, it's five acres, it's outlined in blue. Notably, Saving Paws also owns an adjacent parcel on the, the corner there of Fifteenth and Irvine, and has support from the parcel above it. So although our special use permit is for the facility outlined here, that five acreage, we do have relationships with the adjacent property owners, I just wanted to, to point out here. This land was donated to Saving Paws in 2018 when it started operations there. There was reference to a violation, and just want to clarify that quickly, and I'll go to the next slide, so you have a better timeline in front of you. So this property was acquired in 2018, and 2019, which is the year of our Z case here, a special use permit was initiated to allow for the dog rescue to become operational. That actually became unnecessary, because there was a home on property, and someone was living in the home. And under the county ordinance, this is allowed by right as a home occupation. So that SUP effort was suspended, because it was allowed by right and unnecessary to have further entitlements. And 2020, plans were submitted for a new permanent single-family residential. The home that was in place before was a modular home. Again, I highlighted some of those corporate sponsors, the growth of this organization, more funding became available, able to really create a nice facility, a permanent facility instead of a modular home. And through that process, that modular home was relocated from, go back a slide here, from this principal parcel to an adjacent parcel, which then was in violation of a home occupation, because you don't have a home on the property during a construction period. So, long story short, the SUP was necessary, again, to allow for this rescue to continue through somewhat of a technical exercise of relocating that modular home. And just wanted to be fully transparent about that history, to put a little bit more context on, you know, what brought us here today and why that violation exists. So, long story short, this is very much an interim condition from that home occupation, as that residence, and you see in the rendering below, is under construction at this point in time. SUP will allow for operations to continue, and it really protects this $2 million investment in the property for a longer-term facility than when Saving Paws opened in 2018 without the resources it has now. So, site plans, we heard a little bit about this in the first case in front of us. Saving Paws has a very robust site plan on these five acres. It's been very, very well thought of, with particular planning as well for our neighbors. So this is a little tough to see, I'll take you through one more slide highlighting a few of the features. But I wanted to show you with, with this black-and-white image, is that the facility, the residence, the workout areas, everything that you would have with the dog rescue was strategically placed close to Irvine Road, right? There is a very large setback in the, the north part of the property, where you would have a few more neighbors. Everything you see here is pushed towards Irvine Road. Also notably, this is only about 6% lot coverage of the entire five-acre site, so it's not overbuilding the site by any means. Again, I mentioned that I would walk you through a couple of the key features of the site plan, which we are stipulated to conform with as part of the special use process, and demonstrate through some color coding on our, our black-and-white render here, what exactly is going on. So our entrance will be off of Irvine Road. That will be a gated entrance that leads through a decomposed granite drive aisle and a portica share for guests and visitors and volunteers to come enter the facility. That will be through the new single-family residence, and then the kennels you see are lining the sides of that residence, which Paula had highlighted in her presentation. Notably, the purple lines around that property is a brand-new six-foot CMU wall. So each of those kennels have enclosed spaces for, for the dog's, you know, containment. And then in addition to that, that whole workout facility is enclosed with additional CMU fencing. So it's really a much improved condition than what you see on the subject property aerial on the left here, because it is now a campus, it's, it's a much more robust system with sound attenuation. Whereas before, you didn't have those mitigation factors in play. Just an example of the proposed elevation, so again, a very beautiful welcoming facility, and you really wouldn't notice, you know, this as a dog rescue unless you knew it were there. Site operations, I'll kind of glean through these, these were pretty robust in your staff report, and I'm sure several of our volunteers can speak from their experience. But many of these operations are actually stipulated as part of our special use permit. So this is more regulated than if any homeowner had Fido in the backyard, you know, they can kind of do what they want, up to as many dogs as they want. This is highly regulated through site operations that ensure the safety of the dogs and ensure the safety of the operations, the integrity of the operations, but also are stipulated through our special use permit. So a couple of those to highlight for you are the three part-time employees with the volunteers. That number is a stipulation I as part of our special use permit. Another one is that customers and adopters can only come by appointment at a stip F of our special use permit. The lighting must comply with Maricopa County lighting ordinances and stip J, and that the kennels must be fully enclosed, which is stip G. So a lot of the operations highlighted here are ingrained into a special use permit, which is a benefit of going through this process versus a home occupation. More on the daily operations, which Paula highlighted in her staff report, and again, I'll just kind of breeze through. There is a rotation and an order of how the dogs are let out, their potty breaks start at 6:00 a.m., they're rotational, there's only one to three dogs that are let out at times. So again, much more orchestrated than if a passionate dog owner just had dogs in, in their own personal home. There's an afternoon process, and then by 8:00 p.m., all the dogs are put into the kennel for a night-night time, as I tell my two-year-old. And that's just a duplicative side, I apologize for that. So in summary, I tried to go very quickly here and give you the highlights, because I know several people would like to talk about Saving Paws, the great work they do, and their involvement in the community. But this is very compatible in a rural setting. This is where, exactly where you would expect a dog rescue in a rural setting. It's not in the neighborhood, it's not in a mixed-use community, it is very much in a rural agricultural area, there's other rescues in the area. It does do that very great, important community work in the partnerships I highlighted, very large community support, and you see that in your packets, and you see that today. Staff recommendation of approval was several stipulations, which were all agreement in and are much more regulated than if you were to have, again, this operation by right. And we would respectfully request your recommendation for approval. So with that, again, try to go quickly to just get on with your morning, happy to answer any questions, and come back after folks have had an opportunity to say a few remarks.
Thank you, and we'll give you some time for rebuttal.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody from the commission that has any questions of the applicant?
I have a couple of questions, Chairman, if you mind.
Vice Chair Mitchell?
Yeah, and, and I'll try to keep it quick, just, so I understand that this is kind of like an intermediary entitlement that that's being sought, is, is the idea that, and I understand that the timeline might go beyond whenever a home would be completed, but in theory, if we're looking at this like from a theoretical perspective, once the single-family home is completed, would the need for this, it would then be again considered under the home occupation, or?
Chairman, Vice Chair, thank you for that question. It could be considered as a home occupation and go by right. We obviously are making huge investment in the property, $2 million investment. So we think that the special use permit is appropriate for the longevity of the property. It also protects any interim condition, right? If there is someone living on the property, for whatever reason, property sells, the keeper of the property moves on, this special use permit allows for that entitlement to continue. It does have that timeframe of 10 years, so an opportunity to come back and renew or to continue under a home occupation. It just, again, ensures that investment.
Yeah, no, that, that totally makes sense to me. I was just curious from like a, you know, in, in theory, right? The, the construction of the home would allow that and would allow this entitlement anyways. And so from like a community planning standpoint, that makes sense. Other question I have is kind of more of a technical question, but I was just curious, it looks like some like the, the outdoor kennels, and I know most of them are enclosed, they have like air conditioning and stuff, is that kind of all part of the plan, I assume?
Chairman, Vice Chair, thank you very much for that question. Yes, those are air-conditioned units, kennels for those pets.
Air conditioning is especially important right now, right? So we all have to.
Who needs AC?
Appreciate that, thank you.
Before you sit down, is there anyone else from the commission that has questions of the applicant?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Hernandez, I have a question.
Commissioner Hernandez, go ahead.
Who will be living in the house full-time? Isn't that a stipulation of the home business?
Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioner Hernandez, thank you very much for that question. There is an employee who lives on site, she lives on the modular trailer next door right now. And that plan is for her to continue her stay once the home is complete. Again, the special use permit ensures if there's any transition period, that our entitlement is covered, but there is someone on site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
And Commissioners, Commissioner Hernandez, this, this is Darren. Also, just to clarify, the home-based business requires the entrepreneur of the business to reside on the property. With the special use permit, it could be volunteers or employees that are residing there, not necessarily the entrepreneur of the property.
Okay, good clarification, thank you. Anybody else from the commission have questions of the applicant? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you, great.
In the interest of time, I'm gonna, I'd like to hear from the opposition first. Is there anyone here that are, that's in the building that wishes to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I believe there's two persons online that would wish, that wish to speak in opposition. Sandra Ledke and Mark Wright?
Yeah, Chairman, I have, I have Sandra, she's queued up, she just needs to unmute on her side, and she should be able to speak. I was just chatting there, Sandra, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Sam, do you want me to start, or?
Yeah, just, we're gonna try to limit, because there's other people.
Okay, I'll go, I know I'm under four. My name is Sandra Ledke, I live within 300 feet of the Saving Paws Rescue, and I have resided here for over 15 years. Where I live is definitely a neighborhood. My opposition has nothing to do with their mission to provide a safe harbor and find homes for German Shepherds and Belgian Malinois. I own dogs, they are near and dear to my heart, and they are all rescues. My objections all have to do with location and zoning ordinances that have been violated. The rescue has been in operation at its Desert Hills location for at least three years, without an approved SUP, and under the guise of a home occupation business. But my understanding is, at this time, no one lives there. My concerns have grown regarding some of their business practices during this time. For one, housing dogs and running a business without anyone residing on the property should be a safety concern. We have seen kennels in the news where dogs have died when the air conditioning went out, and no one was home. Just recently, a massive fire at a propane business in Phoenix spread to the Arizona Animal Welfare League, resulting in staff and animals that had to be evacuated. Just a few years ago, in 2020, the Agila Fire whipped through my neighborhood, and I was ordered to evacuate, including my livestock. Who resides at the rescue now to mitigate unplanned disasters? I don't think anyone does. I'd like to show, the first slide that's up is the opposition and support that accompanies today's hearing. One of the things I noted in the comments, in the public participation summary, is that there were three letters in opposition and 58 in support. While this is accurate, the omission of details makes this statement a little bit misrepresented, or misleading. If you take a look at the map, do you see any green? Green, oh, go back to the map, please, yes. Do you see any green? There's not. Green would represent people that lived within the 300-foot boundary in support. Blue represents Saving Paws. There is no green, because out of those 58 letters, no one within the 300 feet wrote a letter in support. Red represents opposition. There's one, you see one opposition, even though there were three letters. My residence resides within this 300 feet, and it's not red. So the red is not me. My understanding is I was not included in the opposition for being read and parceled, because about a quarter of my residence is outside of that 300-foot boundary. The third person does lie within, outside of that boundary, but within the neighborhood and within earshot. Okay, next slide? Oh, let's see. The yellow, I'm sorry, the yellow in the, the, on the slide simply represents that there was no, no response to opposition or support from residents. Okay, now next slide. My property doesn't directly back up to the rescue, but I can clearly hear the dogs on a regular basis. And reading the site plan, it looks there that like they have plans to house at least 20 dogs, which is probably two to three times what reside there now. Just in FYI, the German Shepherd is ranked second when it comes to the loudest bark. It's easy to write a letter in support when you are not within earshot of the facility. Looking at the site plan map, I'd also like to make mention of the fact, and I don't know that it matters, but the kennels are well underway in being built. And when I read the report, it looked like they were not going to start them, start on those kennels until the SUP was actually approved. There's a popular belief that applies to this case, and it seems to happen when an owner thinks their mission or work is above the law. And that is, it's better to beg for forgiveness than ask for permission. This is not the first time I've seen this tactic used in my neighborhood, and it seems to work. In the meantime, it negatively impacts surrounding neighbors, sometimes for years. In my opinion, it makes a mockery of our system and weakens its ability to enforce those ordinances. Nonetheless, there was a violation regarding the operation of the rescue. At the hearing which I attended, they were found responsible and ordered to cease and desist immediately. This was back in January of 2023. I got lost in the appeal and legal agreements that followed, because bottom line, they continued to operate. Since staff has made a recommendation for approval, I do wonder how many of them have actually visited the site. Only looking at what is legally permissible on paper leaves out the human factor. I don't live in an industrial zone, I live in a neighborhood. RU43 is considered residential. The decisions you make impact families that simply live in a residentially zoned area. I thank you for the opportunity to talk today, as I know it's about my only chance to do that. Thank you.
Hey, thank you Sandra for your comments, we really appreciate it. Is Mark online now? David?
Yeah, I have Mark available, Darren, go ahead, Mark.
Mark, please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Mark Wright.
Go ahead, please leave me your comments to a couple minutes, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. My name is Mark Wright. I've lived on the property adjacent to Saving Paws Rescue since 2019. In the map that was just provided, I would be the parcel that was in red, as opposed. I am opposed to allowing Saving Paws Rescue at SUPs. Over the last three to four years, my life has been severely impacted. My quality of life has been severely impacted by the actions of Saving Paws. My quality of life has been severely impacted by the actions of Saving Paws Rescue. Specifically, the barking dogs at all hours of the day and night, and I mean all hours of the day and night, the whining puppies, the barking dog. It's worthy to note that this rescue board is German Shepherd, which is the second lowest barking dog. I'd like to speak in behalf of the S U P. They just made comments that if they, they were interested in longevity of the property. If they were truly interested in longevity of the property, then why didn't they save the course in 2019 to obtain the S U P? I'll tell you why. Because they lost the civil hearing and they got a cease and desist with penalties and fines. Subsequent to that hearing, they had then started to reinstate their S U P. That is truly why they are doing their S U P at this point. Please note, no volunteer lives on the five acre parcel that belongs to Saving Paws Rescue. Although they say that there is somebody that lives on the property, that is not true. If you look at their map, not five acres, nobody lives there. I would ask you, how would you like to listen to German Shepherd's barking at 6:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at night? And that indicated schedule that they will be exercising the dogs. 6:00 a.m., 1:00 to 3:00, German Shepherds can bark very loudly. Regarding the supporters on site, if you look at the letters from the 50 supporters, many of them are volunteers. Based on my review, only one of those supporters lives within 2,000 feet, within Saving Paws Rescue. And that person just owns a lot. They don't technically live there, and they live in Scottsdale, and there is no house on that lot. Saving Paws Rescue indicated they are controlling sound by building a six-foot block wall. As you all know, a wall does not control sound, as sound carries a long way. For example, does your wall at home control the sound of your neighbor's barking dog? Currently, dogs are boarded in two large buildings about 500 feet away from my property. Kennels are being built at the new site, where the dog will have access to go outside these enclosed kennels. These new kennels that have access to outside are about 30 feet from my property. So I anticipate this, this problem will only get severely worse and not any better, as it will be about 470 feet closer to my property. I've made effort to contact the owner, Tricia, directly with my barking dog noise concerns. At first, he replied to my texts and indicated she would speak to the volunteers about some things that they were doing outside of their protocols. But eventually, she ceased to respond to my texts. Over the course of three years, I've sent hundreds of emails and videos to the county demonstrating Saving Paws' lack of compliance to the county ordinances and their very own licensing permit agreement. It took me two years to get the county to submit a summons to Saving Paws. When I was finally able to get Saving Paws summoned, there was a civil hearing where there was a cease and desist with fines and penalties issued. Could you imagine if your neighbor had severely impacted your quality of life for two years and your H O A did nothing? That leads me to one of my concerns. Is that reasonable? Is the county not staffed to enforce license agreements or county ordinances timely? If not, what needs to be done to create win-win situations in these types of situations? Based on the documents provided for this meeting, the county has already recommended approving the S U P. I'm asking you to make a decision that may not be politically in your best interest, however would be in the best interest of the residents within the immediate surroundings of Saving Paws Rescue, as well as established going forward. The county is about to award Saving Paws Rescue with an S U P, even though they have not been operating compliance with their license agreements nor the county ordinances over three years. I would ask you today, why would you reward somebody for bad behavior or lack of compliance? Would you give your child more responsibility if they had already demonstrated they can't handle the responsibility, responsibility they currently have? Would you allow a prisoner out on best behavior if they do not meet the best behavior requirements? To summarize, I have concerns about the integrity of Saving Paws and how they operate their business. Past experience indicates that they will not operate within their own agreed upon agreement or county ordinances. As a result, it will take two to three years to get the county to summon Saving Paws, at which time Saving Paws will operate the way that they want to on their own terms. It takes about two years to get a hearing, and I don't know if that's reasonable. But again, my other concern is the county is not staffed to enforce any laws, rules, agreements, and ordinances timely. I'm asking you to potentially go back and come up with win-win situations if you are to approve this S U P. Again, thank you very much for your time and listening to some of my concerns.
No problem at all, thank you for your comments, we appreciate it. Is there anybody else online, David?
Yeah, Chairman, I have Stephen Merka, who also wishes to speak in opposition. Stephen, you need to unmute your, your phone or computer on your end. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Stephen?
Yes.
Please limit, I've given these, the last two folks more than two minutes, so we've got other speakers on the other side of the aisle, so.
Okay.
Try to reunite as we can, so please go ahead, speak, state your name.
I live at 1710 West Irvine, which is about 600 feet west of this property, and I can hear these dogs barking. I've been by that property and seen multiple visitors with multiple vehicles, more than just three people there. And to me, this, these aren't like horses where they make one neigh, dogs get like a pack. I've had dogs myself, nothing with the good intentions of, of the owners wanting to save dogs on this. But this is not the right location. There's plenty of locations in the county by industrial parks or areas where there's not residential houses around. If I can hear this 600 feet down, this is, it's just gonna get worse, is all this is. And these people haven't followed the, the rules to begin with, they were told to follow in the beginning. So it's, to me, this is just in the wrong location. It needs to be located in some more industrial area. And that's my thoughts on that.
Right, thank you very much, Stephen. Now we're gonna switch to those that are in support. Staff said there's 58, is that right? That are in support of it, but I have about six speaker cards here. Of those six that are wishing to speak, we've been here for quite a while so far. Is there any way that you could designate a couple of speakers and we don't just keep repeating the same thing?
Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, it's Rachel. I do want to notify you that we do have two that wish to speak and support that are online.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I don't know if you want to proceed with that before starting with in-person speaking?
I sort of went backwards to begin with. Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't ask that question.
David, could we unmute Georgetta, and then after that, it would be Connie?
Yeah, Georgetta doesn't have audio connected to the meeting. I've chatted with her, so hopefully she can get that. But I have Connie Topliff available. Connie, you need to unmute. There you go. And I'll get Georgetta if she can get her audio link.
Connie, please.
Yes, my name's Dr. Connie Topliff, and I've worked with Saving Paws since, on a volunteer basis, since 2015. I have volunteered and fostered their pups. I currently have, all four of my dogs are from there, three Belgian Malinois and a German Shepherd. I have also volunteered at the Pima County Animal Shelter and the clinic, and have had cause, based on other volunteer activities, to become acquainted with rescues, both regionally and nationally. And consistently, Saving Paws has to be at the top of everything I've seen. I've seen such conscientiousness, the rescue, when you go in, is cleaner than most people's houses. You never see waste products out in the yard, they're always picked up immediately. At their current location, or at another location in Desert Hills, or Union Hills, I'm sorry, the rescue's actually been appreciated by the neighborhood. To my knowledge, there's been no noise complaints, I've been at the rescue on multiple occasions. And the new location will have even better sound deadening measures taken up. The dogs are always well cared for. I think that the landscaping, the walls, those do provide barriers for sound, as sound travels in a somewhat linear direction. I know the neighbors have appreciated them at their current location, they've improved the property, they've improved adjacent property values. And to my knowledge, there really have been no complaints. If there have been, they've been addressed. And I think that on the Union Hills location, they're regarded as very good neighbors. And I do know that the plan includes other support for the neighborhood, including medical services, training opportunities, et cetera. I do know that the Union Hills location, if you were to walk by there, you would not know it was a dog rescue. So I'll conclude my statement there. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I, I've just seen such responsibility with Saving Paws, I can't imagine Maricopa County not having them available. Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it, Connie. Is Georgetta online now?
Unfortunately, I haven't been able to get her connected. She's on her phone, but it's not linked into the audio. She's listening to us, I believe, she just hasn't connected it for her to be able to speak, so.
We'll start with the folks that are here present now. I'm afraid we're gonna start losing our quorum here, we ran on so long, so we can really limit.
I will try and go fast. My name is Sharice Williams. I'm a member of the FAVs, we call us. I'm a foster, an adopter, and a volunteer. This is an emotional thing for us. I've been that way, I've been with the rescue since 2014. I can't tell you how many hours I've been, I can't tell you how many fosters have been through my home. But I can tell you that I stay because what we do is special. Today's about a special use permit, and there's nothing more special than the kind of work we do. The passion and mission of SPR captures your spirit, and the eyes of the dogs capture your heart. I am a volunteer at the ranch, that's what we call this property. We all know that the dogs bark from time to time. We do limit the number of dogs out, they don't, they aren't out in packs. The only time we would have more than two dogs out in a group is if we have a litter of puppies. We do take in litters of puppies and moms, pregnant moms, that are set for euthanasia, youth, being euthanized at the county shelter here. There are so many abandoned and pregnant moms because of our lack of spay and neutering in this county. And so we will have them out in puppies. We also, when you're out at the ranch, we hear sounds of the neighborhood, it's just not dogs. We hear other neighbors' dogs, we're not alone in the number of dogs we have. We hear kids playing. We hear horses, donkeys, chickens, cows, doing their animal stuff. We hear dads in their workshops, tinkering on their cars, music poolside on a Sunday afternoon, birthday celebrations with jump houses and kids playing, family gatherings to celebrate the loss of life. That's the sounds of the neighborhood. These are the sounds of community. As ranch volunteers, we work tirelessly to provide for the needs of the dogs and their well-being. But we also work to keep what we do from intruding on the neighbors we have. Keeping our property clean, limiting the number of dogs outside, while still saving lives, that's our goal. Our community is in crisis with staggering numbers of abandoned and unwanted dogs and puppies. The shelter system is only able to successfully adopt a fraction of them. Respected organizations such as Saving Paws are needed, because the alternative isn't pretty. The innocent will die because no one wanted to help or support the efforts of those of us who do. SPR has been awarded and recognized in this community, in this county, for our efforts and success in helping the most vulnerable of those. The sick, the injured, the old, the pregnant. That is special. You have all the details of the construction project and what has gone on in the structure to be a good neighbor. The acreage, the landscaping, the sound barriers, the drainage, the aesthetics, all of those things that make that building the best it can be. What the building plans don't show you are the faces of the dogs and the puppies who come through the doors. The building is more than block, plumbing, and concrete. It's a place of healing, a place where the vulnerable, the forgotten, and abused can find a gentle hand, a calm voice, and the care they need. We are committed to being a great neighbor, because that is special. What we do is special. It takes a committed, responsible organization and a supportive community to solve difficult problems. SPR volunteers are committed to fighting to the end of killing of homeless and abandoned animals, while still being a courteous neighbor. We can operate in a way that provides for the dogs to enhance the community. I would ask you to make your decision carefully, as lives depend on it. I do not know of any more fitting use for a special use permit than for the special people and dogs of Saving Paws. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I was informed that, is it Georgette? Back online now? David?
Yep, go ahead, Georgetta.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record.
My name is Georgetta Mihailovich, and I'm speaking on behalf of all the dogs saved from euthanasia by Saving Paws Rescue. I volunteered for the rescue since 2019. I fostered sick dogs, injured dogs, dogs nobody believed. The rescue will bring them alive and adopt. I adopted one of those dogs hit by a car and left on the street with it. Her name is Millie. She's now a hospice therapy dog. Our, our dogs were adopted by police officers and used to service the state of Arizona. Some of them are Border Patrol as canine officers. Many of our adopted dogs have become therapy dogs for volunteers, for veterans, for disabled army soldiers, P T S Ders. Therapy dogs going to hospitals, nursing homes, cancer center to provide comfort and support. I was at the rescue volunteering every morning, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays for almost four years. Anytime we got a call from police, Saving Paws Rescue was there. Every time we got a call from county, say, sorry, Saving Paws was there. I pick up dogs from Indian Reservation, I pick up dogs from county, I pick up dogs from Pickenberg, from Human Society, I drove to other shelters to pick up dogs on euthanasia list. I'm very familiar with the area where Saving Paws Rescue is building the new home for our dogs. I'm a nurse practitioner working for hospice, and I drove around that area at least twice a week for five years. It's a rural area with few property with some acreage around. There are two other rescues within one mile distance. If you drive on the road and around the rescue, you can hear and see kids on dirty bikes, people driving with, on their ATVs, horses, racing cars. And not far away from that construction, in New River, there is a nude resort, Shangri-La, where the, the cars are driving like crazy. Our new building doesn't stick out as something abnormal. It fits perfectly in that environment and saves lives. The new building is toward the back of the street, gated with plenty of parking inside that area. The new construction is under construction, and yes, there are noises. But if the bikers and the ATVs are running around like crazy, of course, dogs are barking. There is somebody on the property all the time, Erica lives there, and she is a dog whisperer. I'm, I'm so emotional. This is what we need to save people too, because those dogs are not only for themselves, but for our community. I support Saving Paws Rescue. Saving Paws Rescue exists because of so much support from, from public. I appreciate you letting me talk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I still have five people from the audience, from the public that wish to speak. I still have five people from the audience, from the public that wish to speak. It's been noted from staff that, that this case has overwhelming support for it, so. And I know everybody took the time to come down here and fight traffic and all the construction, but anybody else is dying to speak, we'd be glad to hear one of you or all of you, or just your, the applicant. That'd be great. Okay. Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Hi there. My name is Hannah Sarita, and I've been a volunteer with Saving Paws Rescue for three years now, primarily at the location that we refer to as the ranch. I've spent thousands of hours volunteering at that specific location and watched hundreds of dogs and puppies come in and out, and have personally seen the positive impact that they've had on new families. Little did I know that a week into my time as a volunteer, a catastrophic fire would take place in the Desert Hills area. Watched hundreds of people flee from their homes with hardly any possessions, but so many of them taking the time to make sure their pets weren't left behind. It occurred to me the rescue's new home was in a community that cared deeply for animals. I've since gotten to know some of those neighbors. Several have commented to me how surprised they were that we have dogs because they don't hear them. What they do share with me constantly is the seven dogs that live directly south of our property that live outside twenty-four seven and do bark at every vehicle, horse, and A T V that goes by throughout the day. I wonder if the complaints that you're hearing about barking might be those dogs. I want to share with you a couple of dogs that have made a permanent mark on my heart. Carolina, the extremely timid stray we took in. Olive, the feral mom who was found in a hole she had dug to protect herself and her puppies, two of whom had already left this earth. Darcy, the sweet old lady who could barely walk from valley fever, and Joey and Jess, whose experience with people had only been abused. As I was able to watch each of them transform from the unconditional love and compassion of our rescue's volunteers, my favorite part was watching that same love transform incredible families. A single man who was desperate for a friend, a couple who had lost their dog and needed someone to love, and a family whose husband was determined to show his daughter how a man's best friend can change your life. The greatest impact, however, has been from a dog named Scar. After being surrendered with his very pregnant mate to a county shelter, SPR stepped up to prevent the mom from being euthanized and the puppies killed. When the volunteers learned dad was in need too, Trish didn't give it a second thought. Those six puppies went on to make an impact in six families in our community for the better, and Scar eventually found his way to his forever home with my family. All of these stories and more are the reason I'm speaking to you today. I kindly ask that you allow Saving Paws to continue to not only change dogs' lives, but the lives of the Desert Hills community too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll take one more. I try to be fair to both sides, so give equal time. Perfect. Yeah, if you can please limit to two minutes and less. Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Valerie Samorosa. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate you hearing our statements today. I commend you challenging roles for not only settling disagreements between neighbors, but having to do so thoughtfully, keeping entire communities in mind.
Oh, you have no idea.
I can imagine. SPR is, Saving Paws is, it's not just people in this room. It's not just people on the paperwork in front of you. There are nine hundred and sixty-seven members in the Facebook group. You can't get into that group unless you have adopted, fostered, done something for the, for the rescue. So there are nine hundred and sixty-seven members of this community that believe enough in their mission and have done active work towards furthering their mission and making a difference for these dogs and in our communities. As you may know, SPR is a rescue for German Shepherds and Belgian Malinois. Every day, seventy animals enter Maricopa shelters. German Shepherds are amongst the top five breeds surrendered to shelters annually. SPR is equipped, knowledgeable, and willing to care for these dogs and help families who need to reconsider their decision to get a German or a Malinois and place these dogs with people who are legitimately equipped to handle these intelligent and high-energy breeds. Last year, county took in four hundred and forty-two more animals than they did in two thousand twenty-one, and one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight more animals than they did in two thousand twenty. Unfortunately, in that same time, the average save rate has dropped nearly two percent, which doesn't seem like much until you do the math, and it's three hundred and forty-three animals. Think about the last time you saw three hundred and forty-three of anything. It's not an insignificant number. And this is not to speak ill of county operations. Obviously, we're here. I'm emphasizing the sheer number of volumes that they have to deal with and to the point that there's no reason not to allow SPR to continue to alleviate the strain on public resources, especially because they're servicing two breeds that most people aren't looking for when they go to shelters to adopt. I've been to the current rescue facilities. They're thoughtful, considerate neighbors. Dogs are well-cared for. You, like everyone said, you wouldn't know it was a rescue. I know because the first time I went, I drove by it twice. It was a little annoyed, and then I found him. But I expect that if their permit is approved, it will continue this way.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? I see none of the applicant would like to make a quick rebuttal.
Chairman, Vice Chair, thank you very much. I will be extremely brief in these comments. You've heard a lot this morning about operations, the integrity of the operation. You've heard from the passion, dedication of SPR, its volunteers. One thing I just did want to clarify is the violation history for this property, kind of a technical component of this case. The only violation on the property is respect to the home occupation and that modular trailer being moved from one parcel to a parcel below the, the red opposition. Actually, those two parcels are both supporters of this project, one owned by SPR. And I just wanted to make that crystal clear. There are no use-type violations on the property. County has been called out before, found no violation. There's record documentation of that. The only violation on this property is a technical exercise when a modular home was moved from one parcel to another, no longer allowed to operate by right because you don't have that home by right. So just wanted to make that crystal clear. It's not an operation exercise other than literal placement of that modular home. So thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions and appreciate everyone participating today.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the Commission or the applicant? Hearing that, I'm going to close the public forum. Further discussion from the Commission.
Yes, Chair Slasher.
Vice Chair Mitchell.
Thank you. This is in my district, District Three, and as was discussed a little bit, kind of one unique role of, of our role as Commissioners is we try our best to take into account the concerns individually of, of the people in our independent districts, and then also the good of the county and try to put forth recommendations of what, what we think is good policy as well. So I, I'll cut to it that I am going to be supportive of this project, but I did want to make a couple of comments specifically to Sandy and Mark, who we appreciate their time coming out as neighbors to speak about this. And I just wanted to explain that while, you know, ideally, it sounds like for them, they would prefer that, you know, there's no, no dogs in their backyards, that they didn't have to hear anything from them. That's not really actually what is before us today. It's, it's a different, there's not that dichotomy. What I see before us today is we either recommend approval of the special use permit, which contains a number of additional regulations that, that the rescue would have to follow, including the soundproofing and the rotational walks and things like that, that ultimately lead to a better product, a better shelter, and hopefully them being better neighbors as well. Or if we recommend denial, then the home is constructed in the next, you know, however long a home takes to construct, a year or two. And then because applicant has a great zoning council, I'm sure she would ensure that they're operating as a home occupation correctly moving forward. And so then the use is, is going to be allowed there either way. So to me, I see this as actually a beneficial step in protecting the neighbors and that there is going to be additional regulation that requires they be good neighbors. The final thing I'll say is just, you know, thank you to the volunteers that came and spoke. What you guys are doing is, is really, really a worthy endeavor. And I know that the new county manager, Jen Pokorski, who's been doing a great job, one of her kind of initiatives is, is paying attention to, to this issue. So if anything, you know, we should be focusing on, on expanding these types of services. So thank you all for, for what you do, for that. I will be supportive of this, and, and I want to give the Commissioners any other time in the case they want to say it, but then I'll be happy to make a motion.
Are there any other Commissioners who wish to have any questions or comments?
Chairman Slasher, this is Greg Arnett. Can I make a comment?
Commissioner Arnett, go ahead.
Yeah, so a lot of the same feelings. I, I, I hear the passion of, of all those in support. Of course, that's not what we're, it's, it's great work. This is a zoning case, however. It's kind of like a hospital. It's great. We need it. The question is where to put it. Also, some of the opposition, it's very great comments. Nobody wants to hear a massive amount of dogs right next to them. So my question, and maybe staff can answer this, it's my understanding that a special use permit will actually give a little more teeth to being able to, to, to police that a little bit in terms of having a home-based occupation business. So if it does get out of control in terms of noise and that, because, I mean, we all have dogs. I, I wish there was something that could be done with the barking dogs next to me. But as, you know, it's just city ordinances, right? And I guess there's really no relief from that. But to have it there, it's my understanding that a special use permit potentially will put greater regulations on them, and they're now on the record where they have to keep the noise down. Am I, do I understand that correctly?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Arnett, it is correct. It is potential for a special use permit to have conditions that can add stricter regulation. I think it's arguable and, and as to whether or not the different parties would agree that that is happening here. But it, it does seem pretty clear that the proposed special use permit and site plan is an improvement to the existing conditions.
Okay, yeah, that's the one concern I have. It is a rural area. It's really odd to have a case normally. These are the sounds that everyone wants out there in the rural communities, and now it, it's kind of, I understand the, the opposition of those that live close by. I don't know with or without this S U P that it changes anything because by right, they can have dogs, right? So I don't know that it changes my, my opinion enough, but I'm sensitive to those neighbors. But again, in terms of a zoning case, I think the applicant has done a good job to, to make sure we've at least met a lot of the concerns here. That's, those are my only comments.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Arnett. With that, I'll ask for a motion. Vice Chair Mitchell?
Yes, Chair Slasher, I'd like to make a motion for recommendation of approval of K C two thousand nineteen one zero five with staff recommendations.
I have a motion to approve from Vice Chair Mitchell. Have a second? Do you have a second?
Commissioner Hernandez.
Which Commissioner?
Hernandez.
Commissioner Hernandez is making, is making a second roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Arnett?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan Zeison?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Mitchell?
Yes.
And Chairman Slasher?
Yes.
Chairman, we have an approval by a vote of six to zero.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for showing up, both in person and online. We appreciate all your input. Almost done here. Other matters?
Mr., yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just an announcement that the August seventeenth commission meeting is canceled.
Okay. That's it? Time is ten fifty-nine. Meeting is adjourned.